She'd be homecoming queen.
She would be, yeah.
That's what I told her. I'm sorry?
Hello? Earth calling Chris. Chris, come in.
Yeah, we're gonna do it.
Karen, if you're in the control room, send me a text.
Karen, if you're under control, send a text.
Hey, I'll answer that for you, Tim. Would you? It is. This is gonna constitute the City Council meeting for the City of Rainbow City for March 13th of 2023. I'm gonna ask Anita Bedwell to do our invocation and be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand?
Let us pray. Lord, I just come to you, we each do with humble hearts today, for the things that you just pour out on us each and every day. Lord, we thank you so much for the blessings for our city and our citizens who live here, and help us, Lord, to be leaders and do the things that you would want us to do and make the decisions that will be good for each and every one of us. But let's remember us, Lord, especially, to follow the track that you have laid down for us so that we can be that good citizen and that good Christian person and let our light shine for you with other people. Thank you, Lord, again, for all the blessings that you have given us and just watch over us and keep us safe. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you turn your cell phones to the off or vibrate position, we would appreciate that. And clerk, will you take a roll call?
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 27th of 2023, and I entertain a motion that we do so. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number six is to authorize Mayor Taylor and City Clerk to open a new bank account for the opioid class action settlement at the Exchange Bank, and I'd entertain a motion that y'all authorize us to do so. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number seven is to authorize Mayor Taylor to sign the contract for services for the Jones Group LLC for Governmental Affairs and Strategic Communication effective March 1st of 2023 through August 21st of 2023. The price is $2,500 a month, not to exceed $15,000, and I'd entertain a motion that you authorize me to do so. Is there any discussion?
That's the 31st, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. 31st. Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number eight is to issue Joel Garmin, the building official, a credit card through the Exchange Bank for Travel and Education. The credit limit will be $2,000. And is there a motion to issue that card? Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number nine is to accept the resignation of Kinsley Hammerick, a police officer, effective March 1st of 2023, and post for two certified, non-certified police officer positions for 10 days to end Friday, March 24th of 2023. And I'd entertain a motion that we accept that resignation and post those positions. Is there... Got a second? Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 10 is to promote Andrew Willis to detective effective Friday, March 17th of 2023, and I would entertain a motion, gladly entertain a motion, that we promote Andrew to detective. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? And congratulations to Andrew. Do you wanna come up and say something? You got anything to say? You sure? This is your chance. It's your... Yeah, I hope you said more in the interview. Good deal. Well, congratulations. We appreciate your hard work in getting to a position of promotion and just the job that you're going into. We know that it's tough. We know you see things that are not what people should see, but we appreciate the fact that you're willing to do that. Number 11 is hire Molly Page as a full-time library assistant effective Friday, March 24th, and I'd entertain a motion that we hire Molly. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 12 is to authorize the City Clerk to request sealed bids for a used Ford Transit van to be used by Jim Stewart, our electrician. Sealed bids be opened on Thursday, March 23rd of 2023 at 4:00 PM in a special called council meeting. And I would entertain a motion that we authorize the clerk to do that. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 13 is sponsorship request from Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northeast Alabama for the Bowl for Kids' Sake, and what's the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we sponsor an amount of $600.
Have motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 14 is a sponsorship request for Family Success Center. Talk Derby to me, and the levels are as shown. What's the pleasure of the council? Hearing none? Being none, I'll talk to them again and find out exactly how this sponsorship works. I was a little unclear on it myself, and so we'll just pass by that. Number 15 is Michelle Sanders' support for SHS. We've already spoken to Michelle and we'll be trying to do something for the Quiz Bowl. Quiz Bowl is, at Southside, has really become a very, very good team. I mean, they're doing some big things and they have an opportunity to go off and attend state championship tournament. And what's the pleasure of the council when it comes to the support for them?
Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that we give the Quiz Bowl $1,000 to students. That goes to Southside and Rainbow Middle, a lot of kids from our area. So, in form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second to give $1,000 to the Quiz Bowl. Is there no discussion? Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? One abstention. Is there any of our departmental reports from the different departments? Anyone got anything? Kenneth, you got anything? I'll hit him. Okay, go ahead. You wanna come up to the... If you would, give us your name and your elected position.
Mayor of Spine.
He wants to do it.
Kenneth Pine. Recycling, head up the recycling program. And a mayor of Riddles Ben.
That's right.
You asked me for that.
That's right.
I'd just like to, on a serious note, think the recycling program, I know you're gonna touch on some of this, but the recycling program is doing well and we get a lot of stuff. And I'd like to recognize Allison Hams at Southside High School. About every two weeks, she calls me with a good bit of recycling material that I go and get it, and she's got a good little program going on her own and her own students. So, and on the other side of that, I talked to Tim Ham this morning, and they'll be here for cleanup day, but they'll start early. They may start next week, you know. All I ask them to keep up with the bag count, so we'll have that to go with. But we'll pick up a couple hundred bags ourselves in that period of time. But we will also, excuse me, they'll pick up, they'll start early on, but right now they're having a time up here on 431 from the landfill off of Sand Valley. They've been up there for, I don't know how long, they're up there today, so I don't know the answer to that, but that's funny they haven't got down here yet. But when they do get down here, like I say, we kinda take care of a lot of, and Tim Ham does an outstanding job on hitting that program up.
He really does.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it, Kenneth. Anyone else? And that's to add that? Yeah, we need to, to make an alternate to a surplus bid for 2023, and that's to add a portable military light generator. It showed on our list that we had one. We actually have two that would go to bid, and I'd entertain a motion that we make that revision. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? There we go. Anyone else? Wanna recognize our county commissioner, Tim Ramsey's here with us. Tim, do you have anything? I'm not gonna gavel you. I will if you go too long.
Thank y'all for letting me be up here today. I ran into Cheho and Blaine Sullivan out in the vestibule there. I know they met with y'all. Just want to reiterate what a great program that was. I don't know if any of y'all came by there about a month ago. They had the first one of those. Ms. Sullivan put together a hugely successful event. I mean, it was amazing. We had people from all over the county there. Must have been, I don't know, 30 or 40 adults with disabilities there, and they had them entertained. There was a young group of young ladies from Southside that came and helped with the activities and stuff and like that, and we just had a really a good night. And it's gonna happen again on the 17th, and I'm looking forward to that. So, anything that you guys can do to promote that, to help sponsor that, or whatever you can do to make that more successful, I would appreciate it, and I know they would, and it is absolutely a great thing for our community and for our county. Secondly, the Family Success, and I know y'all don't know that much about that. I have attended one of those Derby events, and it is a really well-put-together event. And Family Success Center does a lot of good things in our county. One of the things that they do is sponsor some of the food banks at the schools and help maintain those and run those things, amongst other things. Emma Clapp is the head of that and just a phenomenal person, so we need, I'm just a positive toward that. Anything that y'all can do to help with that would be greatly appreciated. And then, one last thing. I have just added money back into the snippet ticket program from my discretionary funds. I would encourage y'all to do that again if you can. It seemed to me to be a very successful program. I know it ran through Rainbow City, and I don't know if y'all had any hiccups with that or any kind of problems with that at all, but I think there was 140 animals that we actually got neutered or spayed, and everybody just kinda pitched into it. Going to send a letter out to the rest of the, to the rest of the mayors in the county, just asking for any kind of help with it. We did do animals from all over the county, and it would maintain, you know, Lada Baloo's little company kinda maintained the records and all the upkeep with how that ran. So, didn't really cost the county anything to do it. Didn't cost y'all much to do it either as far as personnel. It didn't cost anything, so I just wanna advocate for that also, so. Appreciate you guys. Appreciate you guys letting me come up here today. Always good to see you. Always good to be here.
Thank you, Tim. We appreciate you.
Tim, one question. Do you, the Talk Derby to me, when is that? Do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head.
It's May 6th at Brunson Farms.
So, we have time maybe to revisit that?
We do.
Yeah, and it is the same day as the Derby event, the actual Derby, and they play that on the thing, and people dress up, put the hats on, and it's a fun event. And again, it's for a good cause, so they had it out on the river rocks the last time. Of course, it was kinda cold and a little bit rainy that day and kinda messed up things, but I understand it's gonna be here in our city.
It is.
This time, so, thank y'all.
We appreciate you, Commissioner. Anyone else? I'm gonna go to our council comments, and we'll start with Mr. Weiss.
Excuse me. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. It's a pleasure to serve the citizens of Rainbow City. I think we were all ministered to today, hearing from Ms. Sullivan and what they're doing with the Marinatha Outreach Ministries, and echo the mayor's comments that anything we can do to partner with groups such as that, we're more than willing and will continue to be here. We're here to serve. And again, that was, I was personally ministered to through that, and I hope everyone else was too, and I'm sure they were. I'd also like to reiterate, my abstention on the vote for the Scholars Bowl was not in opposition. It's because I teach at Southside High School, and I wanted to avoid any conflict of interest, but I think it's an excellent vote, and I'm 100% supportive. That being said, I appreciate and congratulate those young men for what they do, and Ms. Burgess as well, and thank you.
Mr. Prince?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief tonight. I too want to say to my fellow council members and the mayor, my appreciation for the hearts that I see up here when we hear from our citizens such as Ms. Sullivan, and that too, as Randy said, that touched my heart and is a good thing. Very proud of our Quiz Bowl team from Southside High School, which includes obviously Rainbow City. Glad that we can help sponsor and help them in any way possible. Wanna give a shout out to Coach Randy Weiss, who is the coach of the number one, current number one boys soccer team in 5A in the state of Alabama, and that is a really big thing. I read his article, and he said all the right things. He's, you know, basically, I'm gonna paraphrase, it's a lot easier to get to number one than it is to stay there. So, best of luck the rest of the way for your guys. Kinsley Hammerick, really hated to see that come up, but certainly understand and want to thank her for her extreme dedication to our city, the time she has served us, and wish her absolutely nothing but the best. Andrew Willis, we're getting a great person in our detective division. Thank you for all you do and all you've done. Our utility department, and I'm not gonna steal someone else's thunder to my right, but I do wanna shout out, 'cause we saw on social media a little thing last week. We had a water break, and we had guys out there for 12 hours getting it done in less than perfect conditions. So, I really want us to keep in mind what all they do for us. I like water. I like water pressure. But in seriousness, I do appreciate all they do. We were on Economic Development Academy Zoom meeting this morning, and I just wanna say that the State Director of Commerce, Greg Canfield, was speaking, and there were mayors and council members from all over the state of Alabama. We, and I'm gonna be very careful with my words, we have the best mayor probably in the state of Alabama. And I'm not saying that to brown-nose or, but I, and I know you have some help along the way. I hope we help you and support you, and that's what we're here for. But being in Montgomery last week at Advocacy Day and watching some of the other mayors as they got on this call, made me proud to be from Rainbow City. I'll just say it that way, and I wanna thank all of my fellow council members and our mayor for all they do. Last thing I have is, I just wanna give a shout out to the newest citizen in Rainbow City. That would be Finn Thomas Prince. That's my grandson, and I have a few hundred pictures of him, but I'd like to see him after a while, so, thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Ms. Bedwell?
We do have a good mayor. Thank you, Mayor, for the time that you spend and how you represented us and Rainbow City and everyone up here. I think that each one of us has a heart for this, or we wouldn't be doing it, and we're very appreciative. I am for the citizens of Rainbow City letting me serve, so. But a couple of things that I, we talk about how fortunate we are with each department that we have, and today we were in our work meeting and we talked about, a little bit about the utility. You know, we don't say much about them, and that's kinda my fault. I'm on the utility board as a representative of the City Council. And we all love the services that the utility board provides for us, those of us who have sewer, but we all have water, and it is, you know, if you're without water, you really know about it. It is a hardship, and we're very blessed to have such a great utility and such great employees at that utility who are dedicated to serve. And there was a water break last week, and, you know, it was, the weather was nice, but it was cool, and those guys were in water literally to their neck and above. And so, they, when something happens, they drop everything they're doing, everything, their families, everything, to go and take care of that and to serve our citizens. So, we are very, very fortunate to have a group of people, employees, not only here at our city, but at our utility, and I just wanna say, recognize them and say thank you. They work, one of the things about the whole city as a unit is that the police department helps them stop traffic. They help them go do whatever they need to do. Fire department washes off the roads. They keep things going. The brick group, the city streets, everything works together, and when you come into an emergency like that and you're down on water, and, you know, it's just, it's a great thing to see everybody pull together and take care of it. So, we're very, very blessed and fortunate to have all of that group that works together. So, thank y'all so much for making sure that we each have water. The, I think that's all. Kinsley, yes, we all hate to say Kinsley. We appreciate her very much and the time she's spending. Congratulations on your new move. I'm sure that it will be a positive for you and for Rainbow City. We have such a great opportunity to help with not, when we look at our special needs patients, our special needs adults and what their people are coming together, and I'd just like to be a part of that, to help serve them. And all the way up to our Scholars Bowl. You know, there's a place for each one of us, and as she said, Ms. Sullivan said, the Lord has a place for each one of us. So, we just need to open our eyes and look and put ourself into service. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I will start by saying that my favorite part about this afternoon and tonight, without question, was getting to meet and talk to the Sullivan family. I really appreciated them coming, and what stuck out to me more than anything was the comments that Cheho made about, we saw a need, and instead of complaining, we just decided to do it ourselves. I mean, imagine if the thought process of every member of this community was exactly that. We saw a need, so we just did it. So, I commend them immensely for that. I do wanna commend our utility department as well, and I just wanna say that that starts from the top down. That's coming from our leadership, starting with our mayor, who, as we've already mentioned, is a great mayor and is an even better friend. But those examples are set at the top. With our mayor, with Eddie Klein as a superintendent, these are not people who look around and say, well, that's not my job. I'm not gonna do that. These are all people who say, no, I'm gonna get down in that ditch, and I'm gonna dig it with you. And I am very, very, very proud that we have those types of leaders at the City of Rainbow City. I do wanna wish Kinsley the absolute very best, and I do wanna say congratulations to Detective Willis. We've gotten to work some fun shifts together on night shift, and some not-so-fun night shifts together on night shift, and I know what kinda law enforcement officer you are, and I'm proud that you work here at Rainbow City, and I'm really happy for you. And I also wanna say to Lexi that I appreciate the support that you give, because I know that it's a lot harder for you than it is for Andrew. That's all I have.
Mr. Hopper?
Well, I'm not gonna be long at all. Y'all covered everything. So, you know, and I think I'm awake now. Really, the thing is, yeah, we're gonna miss Mackenzie, but I'm proud for you, Andrew. I mean, Lord, I've been investigating longer than I care to permit, but it's rewarding and it's also very frustrating. It's, my wife swears up and down I can't cry. You know, people die, just kinda blow it off. It's just another day at the office. But it is demanding, and Jamison, I guess, touched on your wife as far as support system. It's gonna be tough on you too, 'cause he'll be gone, you know. Phone ring in the middle of the night. People's gonna want this, that, and the other. So, just wanna let you know, good luck. Hold on, that's my alarm going off. See, I can't deal with technology, Jamison. See, I can't deal with technology, Jameson. Oh, that's right. That was, that was to remind me to clock out when I'm at work, but I've already clocked out for the day. I have to do things in my old age. I think the only thing other than that that we've covered is, yes, we got an outstanding mayor. He says incredible things. I think him and Councilman Kent Black both did at advocacy day. We'll leave that at the table right now because it's kind of an in-house thing. But everybody up here does have a servant's heart, and I appreciate them. But I want to say this too, as far as our workers go, we know the water department people, what they've had to do, we've seen it. We've seen them out there on Rainbow Drive. They've been down at my house off Pleasant Valley Road and this other one. But, you know, what we do with the recycling department, what we do with the lawnmower crews, it's fixed to be summertime and when we clean up, and every time it rains, stuff washes into the drain pipes and it gets backed up. And I'm sure all, my phone blows up, everybody's phone blows up. And within a matter of a few days, everything's back to normal. So I want to give a shout out to our crew as far as being able to also respond very quickly with a small bunch and get from, pull from one job to the other during the course of the day to accomplish what they accomplish. Other than that, I'm ready to go home.
I'll try to get you there as fast as I can. Just a few announcements. Thursday, March twenty-third, we have a special called council meeting at four o'clock P M. to take care of some business. Monday, March twenty-seventh, the council meeting has been canceled due to the mayor and council attending the National League of Cities in Washington, D.C. The R S V P, Free Tax Service at the community center, starting each Wednesday, April twelfth, all the way through April twelfth, eleven-thirty to three-thirty P M., and that's an opportunity that you can take advantage of. Saturday, April first, is Lions Club Pancake Day from six A M. till noon. And I'll be the, I'm the head chef, and I'll be assisted by sous chef, which is Mr. Jenkins. Saturday, May, that's when I get to talk last. Saturday, May sixth, is Rainbow City Cleanup Day. If you want to have a good time and spend about a half a day on Saturday, you need to come out and do this because it is a wonderful time. Get to meet some, some new friends while you're out here and, and, and just get a chance to go all over the city and make our, make our city a little brighter and cleaner. We're so thankful for Allison Helms from Southside. She's, she's kicking in on our recycling, you know, all the time. They're, they're, she's taking her students out, cleaning up areas of our city, and we just appreciate her and her group so much. What Kenneth was saying about recycling, you know, we're, we're just trying to spread that around and, and allow that to kind of take over our whole area and our region and our county. And one of the things that the city of Southside and the mayor down there was, we were able to enter into a little memorandum of understanding just to, for them to start, just participating in our recycling program. And they're, they're forging and moving full speed ahead to do that. And that's going to allow for us to be able to help them develop their recycling program. And what we're trying to do is to not, not replicate our services. We, we don't want to just keep making them, you know, everybody end up with the same things that we have. If we've got a, in our case, we have a baler and we're going to allow them to come here. And we'll, we'll bail their, their product up and then we'll send it, send it out and make sure that it's not put inside our landfills. And saving every square inch that we possibly can is the intentions of our recycling, both here and in the city of Southside. And we really do appreciate their leadership over there. The snippet program, it was a success, Commissioner. It went really well. I'm hoping that we'll do a renewal on that and, and continue to move forward. You know, it's one of the things that if we want to take the pressure off of our animal control people and if we want to look at trying to get to these, these no-kill positions when it comes to pets and animals, it's going to take spay and neuter programs, and we all know that. And I think just being with, again, cooperating and collaborating with the Adwak County Commission. This proves that government can work together. You've always said, I think it's been kind of your moniker all along, that we're better together. We're finding that out even in this, this small program that, that we've been able to kind of raise up, and I hope that it will expand throughout the county. Our water and sewer guys, they're unbelievable. And when Anita says they were in water up over their head, they were, and they were from ten A M. to ten P M. when they finally shut that down. And just going out there and seeing those guys work, they're, they're well equipped, but they're, you know, their equipment will not do that work until those guys get on the back of it or get on the end of that shovel and do that work. And I can't, I can't appreciate them enough. You know, I've, I've spent my life, seems like digging a ditch, and knowing that there are people that, that go out there and do that and do that for the pay that, that we give to them, it's, it's unbelievable. And, and I just want you to know that your water and sewer, you know, your board and your board members were out there. I mean, they were out there making sure that those guys ever need was taken care of, and, and I appreciate that. I appreciate it so much. Our street department is working all over the city right now, cleaning out some of our problem ditches. We've got a couple of little flood maintenance programs that we're having to put together right now. And if we end up slowing your traffic, slowing you down in traffic, we try to do it at, you know, when it's not peak hours of traffic. But if we do, just, just be a little long-suffering with us over the next few weeks because we're, we're really trying to do some things that we know is going to take the pressure off some of our neighborhoods when it comes to that flash flooding. We don't have a true flooding problem. We have some flash flooding problems, and we would rather not even have those. So if you'll, if you'll just give us a moment while we're doing this work, I promise you, we'll get out of your way. And then we're going to go back to our right-of-way cutting and our, and our paving projects and, and doing the things that this city needs the most. And I just want you to know that, that no matter, no matter which direction this city goes in, just understand that you've got leadership that really does care to take us in the right direction, and I appreciate them more than they'll ever understand. And with that, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Thank y'all. Well, thank you.